Everyone, I'd like to call to order our regular city council meeting for Tuesday, November 6, 2018. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome, everybody. Welcome some Station 33 TV FNR folks. Great to see you. And everyone else. Packed house, as always. Just for giving the feel to the folks that are watching from home. Roll call.
Mayor Mace?
Here.
Council President Garland is absent. Counsel Kuiper?
Here.
Counsel Young?
Here.
Counsel Brous?
Here.
Counsel Griffin?
Here.
Counsel Rosner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. We have approval of the agenda. Like, if counsel agrees, I'd like to pull item E and F and move it to a work session.
Second.
I guess that was sort of a motion in a second. It's certainly got some support. Is there a collective agreement?
I'll make a motion. If you need a motion.
Remind me, Josh, if we just pull and say we're going to put it to a work session, we don't need to move it off there, do we?
I think it's typically been a motion. I don't think that it says specifically in the rules what it has to be. I think it's typically done by motion.
Okay.
So we'll make it a motion because they want to make it a motion. So I got a motion, make it a second. All in favor of adjusting? Any other adjustments to the agenda? All in favor of moving the item E and F from the consent agenda to a future work session? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, counsel. Now, we have an amended agenda. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I move we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Move in second. All in favor of approving the amended agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. We have now a consent agenda that is item A, B, C, D, and G. Minutes of a previous council meeting. Resolution 2018-081, authorizing the city manager into a contract with Marie Smith to complete the city Worcester City's Water System Seismic Resiliency Plan. Resolution 2018-082, reappointing Bernie Sims to the Sherwood Cultural Arts Commission. Resolution 2018-083, appointing Mallory Strand to the Sherwood Cultural Arts Commission. And resolution 2018-086, approving membership rate increase for family two non-residential membership at the Sherwood Regional YMCA.
I move. Approve consent.
Awesome. Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended? Item A, B, C, D, and G. Say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Citizen comments? Time to address counsel on any item not on the agenda? Technically could on the agenda, but we prefer if it was not on the agenda. No sheets? Anyone? Anyone? So you can come and testify and fill out the form after. We're very friendly that way. So please come forward. State, sit at the chair, table. If the light is green, so the mic is live, please state your name and address for the record and wave it around.
So my name is Crystal Ventura. I am in 1587, sorry, 15875 Southwest Baylor Way. And it's back there as well. And I have a few ideas just regarding not just livability, but attracting business and people that live here to stay inside the city for dining and entertainment and recreation. And so I don't know if these ideas are currently on the table somewhere or not. But one of them is, so the Linger Farms property that's being developed has a Phase One that's done, as far as I can tell, a Phase Two that's under construction. And from what I could tell from Phase Two, they weren't really, the developers weren't taking into consideration the view of Mount Hood from that area. And we're kind of in the middle of wine country. We've got 503 downtown. We've got some different stuff going on that's building our value in a lot of ways. I feel like as a small city and just outside of Portland. However, if we had a restaurant, maybe Phase Three, and that would be something that I don't really know how to connect with the Linger family, but if someone does know how to connect with the Linger family and maybe just put a little bug in their ear, that it might add value to the town, whatever, it would be really cool to have maybe on the third story of a building in Phase Three, a view of Mount Hood and an outdoor patio, something like that. I know, it sounds silly, but I think it would be really cool. And bring people to the area. We're also having several places to stay put in along 99. And so we're going to have more people coming into Sherwood, not just those of us that live here wanting to eat and not have to drive all the way to Portland for a nice view at the City Girl. But people come into wine country and they're going to want to dine. So just more opportunity there. My other idea is Lake Sherwood, or whatever you might want to name it. I know, get your kayaks ready. No, so in all seriousness, Toowallaton has a man-made lake. And it's small and people, I guess there's a pumpkin race there. I don't know. But anyways, it's not a place where we kayak or swim or anything like that. But it's pretty and there's businesses around it and restaurants. And I don't know if we'd want to do man-made here. I realize that's a big financial thing. But I've dreamed for years now about somehow damming up and flooding that lowland as you go towards Tonquin Road. And that's not my land, so someone's probably mad at me saying that, but it's like refuge or I don't know what that's considered.
It's the federal government. It's refuge property.
Are they here?
They're watching.
They're coming after you.
I won't myself do it, but I guess I just want to put that out there. I think that would be something really cool for residents to enjoy and bring people in as well as businesses and wine country enthusiasts or whatever, to have some sort of body of water within Sherwood that's open to the public, that people can walk around, stroll around, bike around, whatever. If it's not great fishing, fine, whatever. Kayak, swim, I don't know. Just somewhere where people can exercise and enjoy a pretty spot, because we've got Snyder Park. And Snyder Park.
And all of our trails.
Yes, we do have some trails. So those are my ideas for now for all of you to consider, do what you want with, or give me funny looks.
Well, don't forget. I loved your idea about the restaurant. You talked about that online a couple weeks ago.
I might have mentioned that, maybe.
Yeah, I heard it, yeah. I think that I read that saying on Facebook. We also have the Toowallaton River National Wildlife Refuge that is fantastic this time of year. That is a huge natural water body that people can go. It's not in the city.
We don't have good access, though. Have you ever tried to put in a kayak from there?
There is no kayak access there. Right, it's not allowed. That's right.
Oh, really? There's not? Well, if you go into Toowallaton, then the community park there, you can get access and also Cook Park has access. But within Sherwood, there's no water access that I know of.
Not yet. The Metro bought a bunch of land on the other side of the river. And King and Tiger has also bought a piece of dirt next to Bag and Stows that has river access. So in near future, there will be at least two or three scenarios where river access is likely.
Excellent launch point. Yeah, the old former Organizalia Farm, which is across from Bag and Stows that City of Tiger acquired. And hopefully that will one day become a launch point.
That would be cool.
Thank you very much for the ideas. Always love to hear new ideas.
If you want more ideas, I have plenty of them always coming.
Thanks, Crystal. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Anyone else like to address counsel? Hearing citizen comment? And then we will move to presentations. Is Ty Miller here by chance? So we, I'll let everyone know that another young adult in our community has achieved a great accomplishment. In this case, it's Ty V. Miller. He achieved the rank of Eagle Scout recently. So if you know Ty, when you see Ty around, tell him congratulations. And if we're able to get him at a future meeting, we'll recognize him even more publicly. It's a great achievement for folks in Boy Scouts to become an Eagle Scout, just like the folks in Girl Scouts to achieve the rank of?
The Gold Award.
Gold Award. So I would love to recognize young folks in our community that do great things. So great job, Ty. Then we move on to public hearings. We have one item under public hearings this evening. Sylvia?
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening to hear testimony on ordinance 2018-010, amending chapter 12.16 of the Sherwood Municipal Code Regarding Utility Facilities and the Public Right-of-Way. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. The staff will present a staff report, questions, if any, by the counsel for staff. We will then receive any written testimony. The mayor will then open the public hearing for testimony and the time will be limited to four minutes per person. Any interested person may present testimony. We will then close the hearing. No other comments will be received. Final comments from staff, questions of staff, if any, by the counsel, discussion by the counsel. This is the first hearing before the city council on this item. Generally, the council will hold two hearings prior to making a decision. A second hearing on this item is currently scheduled for the November 20th city council meeting. However, in accordance with the city charter, council reserves the right to make a decision at the close of this hearing by unanimous vote of all sitting council members. This evening, we are missing Council President Garland. If you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak and any questions should be addressed through the mayor. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing will be recorded and limit your testimony to four minutes.
Thank you, Sylvia. Josh?
Thank you, Mayor. So this ordinance is brought forward by staff in response to concerns about increasing demand on the limited space in the city's public right-of-way by utilities. It will essentially do two things. One would allow, when a new telecom or cable utility is being installed in the right-of-way by a utility provider, it would allow the city to require that additional infrastructure be installed at that same time for future use by utilities. So what we envision primarily this would look like would be someone is putting in a fiber line, we would require them to install a multi-channel conduit instead of just a single-channel conduit. That would be at the city's expense and the city would own that. And then in the future, the city or other utility providers can use that conduit space rather than having to put in new separate conduits. So it's more efficient use of the right-of-way that way. The second thing that this would do would help the city to incentivize efficient use of the right-of-way through establishing authority to establish new lineal foot fees for new utilities installed after January 1st of 2019. And those can vary based on a variety of factors in order to help incentivize the kind of efficient use that we want to encourage. So one example would be relating back to the example I was just giving with the multi-channel conduit. If somebody wants to put in a brand-new conduit, that fee is going to be higher per lineal foot than if they want to use empty conduit space in conduit that's already in the ground. So you're incentivizing that more efficient behavior. The fees, as you may have noticed, are not actually set in the ordinance. That's our typical process. We authorize fees by ordinance and then those fees are set by the council by resolution by amending the fee schedule. So if this ordinance ends up being passed by council, the next step will be we'll come back to recommend particular fees to be in the fee schedule. I am happy to answer any questions and Brad's here to help me answer technical questions as well.
Awesome. Well, before we ask questions and if we have any for the day, let's let community members that want to testify give testimony. Sound good? Sounds good. All right. So please fill out a form if you want to testify. We have two so far. Rick, I apologize now. Waddilla? Rick?
He just stepped up to take a phone call.
Oh, so we will, we will let Rick go second. Tim Goodman. Welcome, Tim.
For the record, Tim Goodman, Director of Government and Regulatory Affairs with Comcast, 9605 Southwest Nimbus Avenue, Beaverton, Oregon 97008. Good morning. Good morning, good afternoon. It's been a long 25 hours. I was in Springfield last night, Land County this morning, Eugene this morning, and anyway. I heard there were chocolate chip cookies here tonight, that's why I showed up.
Morning somewhere, right?
Yes. Mayor, congratulations on your reelection here soon to come, so anyway.
Ten minutes.
Just so you know, I am a quasi-resident of Sherwood because my daughter works at the Springs and my son works at Walgreens. I tried to get somehow be able to vote for you, but they wouldn't let me. I live in Bull Mountain.
So you take the opportunity to have dinner with them tonight before the meeting?
They're working. Yeah. So anyway.
That's great.
Appreciate the time and I'll be real short. First of all, I wanted to say, you know, I sent some questions over to your staff on late Friday afternoon and got a response last night. Pretty phenomenal turnaround. Your staff's always been great to work with. Just wanted to throw that out there, so. Secondly, Comcast will be providing something in writing to the city. There's a couple of issues that we have, one philosophically, the other potentially legally. And just wanted to let you know that, you know, there are a couple of things that we have an issue with and I just want to let you know orally tonight and we'll follow up with the letter in the next couple of days. So appreciate your time.
Awesome. Thanks, Tim. And come back, come back, you know, and shop at Walgreens and shop at all of our other Rick Waddilla?
Wydola.
Wydola, I was close. Welcome, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm Rick Wydola. I live at 17663 Southwest Cedar View Way here in Sherwood, so I'm a resident as well as a representative in Verizon tonight in our comments here. We've been working with staff and provided feedback. I think it's in your packets tonight. The only thing we would ask is Kim Allen's comments and what she's provided, she represents us through Wireless Policy Group. And we just ask you hopefully more time to consider these options and work with staff offline to address some of the issues that we identified.
Awesome. Okay, great. Appreciate that, Rick.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address counsel on this first reading of this proposed ordinance? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing for the first reading of the proposed ordinance. Questions or comments for staff from counsel today? I certainly appreciate the work done so far and certainly getting feedback from folks in the community in the region. I think it's important to, and potentially see if there are other, make sure we're on the right path with it. Certainly, any ordinance, if it's adopted, can be updated as we learn and learn things. But yeah, that's my 10 cents.
I just had one citizen had a concern to me, so I just thought I'd throw it out there for a while. Their concern that if we're charging fees to our telecom providers, that those fees in turn get passed along to our citizens. So just throwing that out there, that was a citizen's concern. More fees, get passed along to our citizens.
Yep.
Awesome. All right.
That is, that's always an issue when you're charging utilities fees. And our hope, of course, would be that the utilities would engage in the most efficient behavior and the most efficient use of the right-of-way, and so their fees would be minimal under the ordinance.
That would be great.
All right. Hearing done, we will close discussion on this first reading of the ordinance and move on to city manager report.
Mayor and counsel, just one item for tonight. I want to remind everybody and invite folks to come to our Veterans Day event this Sunday on November 11th. It will be in the afternoon. Normally, it's an 11:00 a.m. event, but we didn't want to compete with church on Sunday, so it's going to be at 2:00 over at the Arts Center. I think this is the fifth year that we've held a Veterans Day event, and I think each year the attendance gets a little bigger. And we're inside at the Arts Center. Five years ago, we were in Veterans Memorial Park in a tent that we rented. So this event is happening again this Sunday, and we really want to encourage folks to And I just wanted to remind people of that fact, so.
Awesome.
Most of the department directors are here, so if you have a question on anything that I can answer or those department heads, we'd love to answer any questions you might have before you go on to council reports.
There's a question. I can feel it.
I was wondering if our public works director might give us an update on leaking conditions at the YMCA.
Leaking?
Ryan was at the meeting on Monday night, our parks board meeting, and he referenced some leaks. And I thought maybe you might be more up to speed on all that stuff, Craig. I know, I'm putting him on the spot, so I thought you can punch me later, Greg. And I just thought maybe you would, I thought you would have some more information, that's all. If you don't have any, that's totally fine, but I thought you might have some information, so.
Actual leaking part of the roof is because the gutter and the scupper box need to be cleaned.
Okay, I heard that. And I also thought there's some other leak. Is that right?
That's the only one that I'm aware of. So I know there was a leak in the shower area, but as far as the roof?
Okay.
That's what we talked about last week when I met with the YMCA staff.
And our responsibility is, I think Ryan talked about a leak in like the basin of the showers is leaking down into like the lifeguard area, office area. Is that what he said, Kristen?
My understanding in the conversation is it's not leaking in the wall from a faucet or any of the piping in the wall. It is cracked grouting, which is not the city's responsibility.
And I think he only mentioned with some ceiling tile that really had to be. Right. And then I think he mentioned the gutter thing, so do you know if that's been addressed? Has the gutter been?
I got an email yesterday that the gutters had been cleaned out. But again, you got to clean them on a regular basis with the trunks.
Right.
Just like our houses.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Sorry.
No problem. Thanks, Greg. Other questions for Joe or his team?
I was going to ask Joe. So now that we have a full-time HR analyst and somebody dedicated HR full-time, which in the past we were splitting time with our HR, Tom was doing it more part-time, right?
We had an HR analyst, though.
Oh, before that?
Yeah, Kelly, remember.
Okay. I was just wondering at some point if we can get some update on how she's doing and the employee handbook and things like that.
Sure. Be happy to do that. That's on her to-do list. It's about 85% complete. And then obviously, we'll probably have some work sessions with counsel because ultimately that comes to you for approval, but that's one of many to-do items.
Anything else she's kind of discovered that might need?
Yeah, I mean, she's been here now for almost two months, so fresh set of eyes. There's a number of things, I think, because she's been leading recruitments, there are changes in the way we do recruitments in terms of things like that.
It'd be kind of interesting just to kind of hear what her take.
Yeah, we can do a work session. She brings a wealth of talent and is trying to do things more efficiently.
Yeah.
Reduce the amount of paper, automate things. So I'd be happy to have her do a work session and provide an update about what she's been working on and more importantly, what's coming.
Yep.
All right.
So.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Great question. Any other question?
Can I ask another one?
Your time has come and gone.
And I know, I just didn't hear.
She just ignores me.
To me, can I just keep going? Is he going to stop me? He's not going to stop me, right? To me, it was kind of a big deal when I found out at lunch today about what happened at Public Works over the weekend. I mean, that was a huge deal. And I saw that list and obviously someone knew exactly what they were doing, it seems like to me, and they were trying to sabotage the city. And I was wondering if the chief and/or Craig had any update. I know it's an ongoing investigation. Want to comment on that at all, chief? Can you give us any insight? Do we have any lead so far, anything?
Or you'll defer till tomorrow when you submit your, send out your thing?
Okay, I might be jumping the gun.
What's that? When I submit what? Oh, okay.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, clearly I'm not going to comment on the investigation.
Okay.
But we did issue a reward today for any information leading to the arrest, so.
How much is it?
A thousand dollars. Anybody that might be watching that has information.
And as long as we're, can we say it out loud, what happened? Can we talk about what happened? I know that it was.
We don't want to go into the big detail, but someone jumped the fence or got.
We had several thousand dollars' worth of focused vandalism done to equipment and vehicles in the public works yard. So somebody trespassed to gain entry and then just went on a destruction spree.
Yeah. Yeah. So if you know anything, there's a nice little reward that you can be great for Christmas shopping, so.
Thanks, C.
Mayor, can I say something else?
Yes.
I've been debating for 10 minutes whether to say this or not, but since they're in the room, I'm probably going to get in a lot of trouble for this later.
Uh-oh, TV FNR, watch out.
But I've worked boot-to-boot with Toowallaton Molly Farm Rescue for almost 30 years. I've seen them do some amazing things. But I just want to give Captain Craig and his team special kudos because they did some of the most amazing work I've ever seen this morning. And I can't go into details, it was a very unfortunate situation. But I was there and paying attention and there was, and we had officers there assisting them, but they clearly were doing the work along with Metro West, a Metro West crew. And they provided CPR nonstop for 40 minutes on a patient that basically they kept the function, the blood flow alive until the person could get to the hospital. And as of right now, they're still in ICU. It was a very unique and interesting situation. Again, I'm not going to go into details, but you guys, just amazing. So I just, you deserve some public recognition for that, so hopefully you won't get too mad at me. But it was, it was, without trying to be overdramatic, it was awe-inspiring watching how you just, that flowed like a machine and 40 minutes of CPR. That's, that's like, that's crazy. So thank you, great job, you guys. Honored to be your partners.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
I didn't hear that story before, so that's fantastic. All right, so we'll move on to, before Counsel Griffin has another question, we'll move on to council announcements, and there might be some question in the announcements.
I'm going to go first.
All right, Counsel is going. For your request, he's not going first.
All right, well, I attended the YMCA Board of Managers meeting a few weeks ago, and their main topic right now is the vision for their board and trying to figure out what their goals are. And they are working on recruiting and strengthening their board. So if you are interested or know anybody who might be a great YMCA Board of Managers, get the term right, Board of Managers, then reach out to me and I'll get you connected. So we could use some good board members. I also attended the Comp Plan Vision Summit that was put on by our staff and the CAC Committee, and that was a great night. I wish we'd had a little more attendance from our public, but it's a great time. Those are advertised on our Facebook page, on our website, multiple other places, I'm sure. So we'd love to see more public giving your input on our comprehensive plan update. And then I think, we haven't mentioned this before, but the PTO Subcommittee, we've met twice, which is myself, Counsel Rosner, Counselor Brous, and staff working on PTO sick time policies. And we have another meeting coming up next week.
Awesome.
And then I also attended the 124th Grand Opening. I was pretty well-attended on a rainy day, so while it was a grand opening, it's not really opening. not really opening until January, so don't get your hopes up.
Soft opening.
Soft opening. That's it.
Awesome.
Counselor Kuiper?
Well, thank you, Chief Growth, for a great introduction to about what I was going to say. First of all, thank you, City Manager Gall for, I'm assuming you put my name in the hat, for going to TVFNR's. Oh, you did! Oh, I'm so grateful, because I'm such a fan of TVFNR. I have always admired the work that these guys do, but I was one of 10 people that was able to go to Community Academy, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, and I learned so much about what goes on and how they plan and the data that they use and the people that are there. I think by the end of the weekend, when we had a debrief on Saturday, I really came to the understanding or conclusion that Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue is a destination organization. It's a place where you go and you don't leave. The people are there, you aspire, and from Chief Dyke all the way down, it's just a really inspirational group of people. I wanted to, so I got a.
She has a page full of notes.
I do.
From the academy.
You do. There were just so many great people.
We're going to just interrupt her and say that there is a time limitation for her comments this evening.
No, I know, time limitation. Okay, so from Chief Dyke, Kim Hahn, Cassandra, Gary Burton, the union officer, Lauren Hitt, who was the chief operations officer, the faster she talked, the more excited she got about data, and I was eating it up. And Counselor Rosner, you would have loved that. She had a great presentation. Christina Lent, who coordinated everything, Chief Van Cullen, and so many others during the morning had some great presentations, learned about how they're aspiring for that four-minute or less response time throughout the region. Saw the big black hole where that's City of Hillsborough, and they don't, they don't mix. We know their stations, it's kind of interesting. They do their own thing, and TVFNR does everything else. But then we went and we played with fire, and we got to use tools and to cut apart a car that was perfectly good car. It was a perfectly good car.
Playing with fire, the appropriate word to use.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was great.
I have to interject.
And the trainers were fantastic, but the tools were really cool to cut apart a car, and the car was, like I said, donated, but it still ran. It was actually a really good car, but we kind of cut it up in pieces. And then we drove a truck, and then around 3:00 after lunch, we all went to our separate stations, and I had the honor of going to Station 33 with Captain Moisen was there, and I think it was the B Crew, maybe? So it was Troy and Kai and the, I have to shout out their names because they were just fantastic. Paramedics, Christian and Josh, and then a guy, Jordan, from Station 61, and.
30 seconds.
Okay, anyway. The last piece is, I'm such a fangirl now, I have to say. So I finally downloaded Pulse Point, which is amazing, but you couple that with the Washington County Emergency Service's scanner, and you have it all. So you can listen, and you can listen on the scanner, then you can put it on Pulse Point and see which station is responding. It's very cool, and I have it on almost all the time at work, so. You've got a fan, you guys, back there, and you have an ambassador, and for those people who are interested in Sherwood, Sherwood School District, any of the boards and commissions, if you're interested, I would absolutely recommend going, and you won't regret it, so thank you. I know it was long-winded, but I had to say it. Thank you, Mayor.
Fine. Counselor Brousse?
So ditto to everything that Kuiper just said about TVFNR, but I was going to ask you, did you have to do an emergency scenario? And if so, did you know what you were doing?
An emergency scenario? Uh, no, I was the rider curse, is that what they call it, you guys? But I did learn how to play golf. Never mind, we'll talk about it later.
I truly don't want to say that I.
All right. So been doing a lot of different events lately, had the opportunity to go to Denim and Diamonds, the Family Justice Center event over the weekend. They did a really good job of raising lots of money, just the amount that I calculated was at least $37,000 in just half an hour time span or so, and that wasn't even all of it. But it was fun to be able to represent the City of Sherwood with our city manager as well. Reminder that the Charter Review Committee has been meeting. We've met for the first time on Monday, right? No, last Monday, right? Or was it Tuesday?
This was last week sometime.
I don't know, recently, we met, and we have another meeting coming up at the end of November, and we're looking for input from the community as to whether or not you think there's some changes that need to be done to our charter, and if you have ideas for charter amendments, please send it to, I think we decided to you, to Josh, the city attorney. And I think, actually, I want to announce one more thing. I just want to thank Chief Growth for attending the Just Compassion Forum last Thursday, where we had a number of chiefs throughout the communities meet and discuss the topic of homelessness and what it means to the police, the police forces, and you did a great job. It's always difficult to go into a situation where you don't know what's going to be asked, and you handled it well, and I was very appreciative of your time. And we'll be having TVFNR do that same thing, so I'll leave it at that. I'm leaving for Columbia in the morning, so my, I'm a short timer.
Awesome. And Columbia with Rotary.
Columbia with Rotary, yep.
Awesome, awesome. Counselor Rosner?
Do I still have time to change my vote? I'm just kidding. Oh, darn it. Just a couple of things, just want to echo what City Manager said. The Veterans Day celebration on the 11th is going to be awesome. I'm very, I was in the Air Force, and our keynote speaker is a retired Air Force Colonel, Angelica, I'm going to butcher this name, Pilato? Is that how?
I think that's correct.
Yeah, so that's going to be, yeah, so it's going to be fun to hear that, and so looking forward to that. I also attended the YMCA 150th Birthday Celebration at the Convention Center down in Portland. That was an awesome event. Keith, did we any number on how much they raised?
I've not heard yet.
It's got to be north of $600,000.
I asked Mr. Burris a couple days ago, they're still.
It's got to be north of $700,000. It was an amazing event. Amy Grant was the entertainment, she did an acoustic set, but really good event, and they got a lot of neat projects going on. I also want to thank the council for putting up with me and Keith calling in from China from the meeting last week.
Hopefully that aired okay on this end.
It was a little bit surreal, kind of unreal, being on a council call and standing next to a 600-year-old Ming tomb, but it was fun. It was, we enjoyed it. But, and I also want to give a shout-out to the Chamber and Lana for putting that together. It was a wonderful trip. They're going to be, word on the street is, they'll be planning more trips like that, and I encourage people to look at it, because it was an absolute bargain and a wonderful, wonderful experience. Last thing, there was Historical Society meeting of the board on November 14th at 3:30 p.m. at the Mooreback House. They're having their annual meeting for all the members, and they're encouraging all the members of the Historical Society to attend that meeting. I don't, it's an annual thing, they do it every year, no big announcements, but they would like to get as many people out there for that as possible. And I think everybody else covered my other items, so I'm good.
Awesome. Counselor Rosner?
Counselor Rosner?
Apologies.
He really doesn't want you talking.
No.
Counselor Rosner, you got more to add, right?
Really, you're just passing my notes. Why don't you just do that?
Counselor Griffin. I apologize.
I actually have no comments.
Oh.
I'm just kidding. Damn, you're cruel. The look on your face was awesome. Okay, I wanted to mention that Monday night, we had the Parks Board meeting. It's always a lot of fun. We spent like an hour and a half talking about parks and recreation and all kinds of cool things in the city. One of the things we talked about is the, oh, they're down, we had some visuals about the new play structure of Pioneer Park is coming online pretty soon, so the Parks Board has made some decisions on that, and that will be bubbling up to whoever makes the final decision. And we also talked about Sierra Creek Trail, master plan, the master parks plan, we're going to get deep into that next year. So always good stuff happening, you know, there at that meeting, lots of fun. The next one is on December 3rd. I think we decided to have one, right? December 3rd? Right. Let's see, on 12/15, the Sherwood Rockwood Festival will be holding their monthly meeting. It's always the 3rd Thursday, 7:00 p.m. at the Masonic Lodge, and I think they're prepping, gearing up for the winter festival, what do they call it? The Holiday Festival on 12/1, December 1st, the parade. It winds, starts someplace, winds up here at the Square, right, and with the big tree and all that stuff at 4:00 p.m. What was that?
Starts at Kohl's.
At Kohl's, I knew it started someplace over there north. That's going to be tons of fun, that'll be great. It's always great to come in here, all the singers that perform at that. Let's see, I wanted to put a plug in for, we're almost, we're like Class 6 of Citizens University, is that where we're coming up on, or 7?
Class 6.
6, yeah, and it's been great. We've had a great time, so we have 6 this week and then 7 next week, so Finance, Katie's on the spot this week. What's the 7th week?
The 6th week, also includes City Recorder.
Okay.
And then the 7th week is myself talking about intergovernmental relations with other.
Your mic's off.
And then we're actually adding Sherwood Broadband, which we've not done a presentation. Brad's going to talk about broadband.
So I just wanted to let everybody know, it's been absolutely great. It was great to meet all of Craig's very capable staff, and they have been here a long time, and they know everything about every foot of street and sidewalk. They can name cracked curb by street name, it's amazing. They have, oh yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, no, they did, they did, it was great. It was really good, and just.
So a little-known fact, when, a couple of us were traveling in China, they put signs on every tree. There is a serial number on every tree. I don't know why, but there is. We thought that was going to surprise them.
Maybe people were stealing it.
We don't need that here, but.
So my point is, I wanted to let the public know that next time this happens, and I don't know when the next time it's going to happen.
February 3rd.
Okay, so you can email the city, email City Manager Joe Gall, let him know you might be interested in it. It was really a lot of fun, it was a great, great time. It's been fun so far. That's it.
Awesome. He said that's it, so we're moving on.
Thank you.
I love you. Thanks for being part of the academy this cycle. Couple of quick things, I want to thank the school district, Heather Cordy, for having me join another tour of the high school site. It was great to be out there, I couldn't join when the city council did it last month, so it was great to see a bunch of concrete and rock, and the orchestra pit is formed, and they are rocking and rolling, they, kudos to the school district, Heather and her team, kudos to Skanska for really being on top of it. They were basically on schedule for their, the schedule they put together 18 months ago, and kudos to city staff for working to help move things along, because that is one heck of a project. I think the Planning Commission and other boards and commissions that are putting up with council with a series of joint meetings that we had, we spent two hours with the Planning Commission. Earlier this evening, which is great, and tomorrow, we're going to come back and spend a few hours with some other of our advisory committees, which will be great. Want to thank our absent member this evening, Sean Garland, our council president, for stepping up and covering for me on a number of things while I've been traveling last month. I know Rosner a lot better now, and generally that's a good thing.
10 days together on the same bus, you get to know someone.
Yes, we're civil, but he has a wonderful, understanding wife. She is awesome.
That's a true statement.
And it was a great trip, kudos to the Chamber for putting that together. I was excited about the trip, and, and I think to a person, of the 46 people that went, they all had a great time and look forward to doing tours in the future, and. Went to the WCCC meeting, which is the Washington County Court of Duty Committee, focuses on transportation in our county, and we had a presentation on autonomous vehicles, which is very interesting, and efforts the state is doing to make sure we have the laws in place for that potential eventuality, whenever decade that might happen. And so that was very interesting, and that's about it. You guys covered most of anything else, so. Anything else that anyone remembered they wanted to bring up or say? So with that, Counsel Brousse, have a safe and wonderful trip. I'm envious. I thoroughly enjoyed my opportunity to go to Columbia and hope to do it again. With that, we're adjourned.